I'm pretty, pretty good about it.
I'm pretty okay with that.
Yep.
I think I'm gonna take the tunnel.
The tunnel from here is actually quicker.
Yeah.
I just hate going through the tunnel.
If I can remember to go north instead of south.
Yeah, if you put it in GPS, it'll tell you to go through the tunnel.
Yeah.
I just hate, I don't know why, I just never. I drive so much, I just autopilot.
What's another familiar territory? Oh sixty-three.
Oh sixty-three, one-one-one.
Yeah.
Oh thirty-eight, forty-five.
They were very hard to keep track of because.
Forty-five, was it one forty-five or forty?
Okay, folks, we're just about to start.
I think that was.
One was like a mansion at the county. That was, that was a big issue.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearing on the 2024 CZMP. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair, and my board members will introduce themselves, starting from my left. Kathy Wolfson, appointee District Four.
Todd Warren, appointee District One.
Katie Panero, County Executive Appointee.
Wayne McGees, appointment from District Three.
Derek Johnson, County Executive Appointee.
Scott Halepka, County Executive Appointee.
Shufik Hampton, my mic isn't.
Can I turn it on?
Shufik Hampton, County Executive Appointee.
Stephen Heinel, County Executive Appointee.
Mark Hackman, District Two Appointee.
Bev German, District Five Council Appointee. Emily Brophy, County Executive Appointee.
Peter Arway, District Six Appointee.
We ask for your assistance, cooperation, and respect throughout the hearing. The speakers that have signed up will be given a total of two minutes to speak on their position and issue in District Six. If you wish to speak and you have not signed up, registration will close soon, but the registration table is right out in the front. Staff from the Department of Planning will call on the speakers, three at a time. When you hear your name, please come forward and be ready to make your presentation. Begin with clearly stating your name. Ms. Benzley will mention your issue number. If you have other issue numbers you'd like to speak on, please mention that also. If you're with an organization, please mention that also. But it's very, very important that we know your issue number and whether you're for it or against it. If you believe the same way as someone speaking, please don't clap, but if you want to stand, we will count you as speaking on that issue. The Planning Board will utilize a visual electronic timer for the speakers. This will help you utilize your time wisely and ensure we have enough time for all interested parties to speak. Everyone registered will be given an opportunity to speak. However, the Planning Board reserves the right to further limit repetitive comments and presentations in lieu of or addition to your testimony. Written comments may be presented to the planning staff table. So if you haven't had a chance to complete what you wanted to say, if you hand in your paperwork, they'll make copies and make sure it's distributed to all the board. Following the completion of our seven hearings, the Planning Board will review the issues and relevant information and make our recommendations to the County Council. The Planning Board's schedule is posted on the Department of Planning's website. The County Council will then hold its own public hearings in June. That's required by code to vote on the newsat zoning map before September sixteenth, 2024. Again, we thank you for your attendance, your cooperation, and respect. Remember, please begin by clearly stating your name, and Ms. Benzley will have your issue number, and then if you're for or against it. Thank you. Ms. Benzley, the first three speakers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have Jeanette LeBlanc, speaking on issue six dash oh oh six, followed by Thomas Burke and Jeremy Tallman.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette LeBlanc. I live in Southland Hills, around the corner from three oh five West Chesapeake, the subject of CZMP issue six zero zero six. Several of the streets in our neighborhood directly back up to the office building at three oh five and its parking lot. All of the homes in our neighborhood are one or two stories with generally quarter-acre lots. This five-story building with a large parking lot sticks out like a sore thumb. Bosley Avenue is, with this one exception, the dividing line between the neighborhood and downtown Towson. A big part of the appeal of living in this neighborhood is the proximity to downtown Towson. There are many multi-story commercial buildings there. That's where they should be and what it's zoned for. Fifty years ago, when the county allowed this five-story building to replace a residential home in a residential neighborhood, that was, in my opinion, a mistake and a miscarriage of zoning laws. Although this foul can't be unwrong now, we can at least ask that this mistake not be compounded with this upzoning request. As one of the Neighborhood Board Presidents said, guaranteeing a real estate investor a profit on his investment at the expense of residential communities is not the hallmark of responsible planning. Please don't approve this upzoning request.
Sure, you're proposing it.
Thank you, I'm opposing it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Thomas Burke, speaking on issue six dash zero zero six, followed by Jeremy Tallman and Caitlin Clem Kelner.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Tom Burke. I'm a retired professor of environmental health at Johns Hopkins University, and I've lived at Southland Hills at thirteen Florida Road for twenty-five years. Our house is on the fence line of three oh five West Chesapeake, the subject of CZMP issue six dash zero zero six. When I say we live on the fence line, I do mean fence line. There's no setbacks, no buffer, no trees, or even a blade of grass between our backyards and the property. There's only a poorly maintained cyclone fence separating us. What happens at three oh five happens in our backyards. Our days are punctuated by the activities at three oh five. Delivery trucks, the cooking exhaust from the restaurant, the banging dumpsters and their associated pests, the noise and tailpipe exhaust from workers arriving and leaving all day. Imagine a hundred and fifty cars arriving at your backyard each morning. And there's the uncontrolled water runoff from the large parking lot with no functional storm drains. The runoff has gotten much worse lately with increased storms and heavy rainfalls. It's led to fallen trees and sinkholes and impacts on our yards, our groundwater, and likely the foundations of our homes. I will never understand how this commercial property was allowed fifty years ago in our quiet residential neighborhood. I only know that the requested upzoning will make a bad decision worse and have profound adverse impacts on our environment, our neighborhood, our homes, and our quality of life. I'm opposed to the upzoning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Jeremy Tallman, speaking on issue six dash zero zero six, followed by Caitlin Clem Kelner and Stephen Nolan. Jeremy?
Next up, we will have Caitlin Clem Kelner, speaking on issues six dash zero one six, six dash zero zero eight, and six dash zero one nine.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Clem Kelner. I am President of the Lenovo Improvement Association, representing over fourteen hundred households in Overly-Fullerton. I am also a graduate of the Second Cohort of the Community Planning Institute. I have three issues I'm speaking on tonight. The first is six dash zero one six. The Lenovo Improvement Association supports the will of the property owner, but we support the County Council recommendation to downzone the property. The community garden that has located this property was built in 2021 by Lenovo community members and members of the Fullerton Free Church. It absolutely fulfills directives that were issued in the Overly community plan. It creates additional passive open space, improves corridor aesthetics, protects, and enhances environmental quality, and provide improvements that will be maintained by the community. Not only that, this community garden is also providing a food source for people, as there is a food pantry and fresh vegetables that are being grown onto the plot. We support the removal of the AS designation, as an AS designation would be an issue for the Lenovo community. In regards to issue six dash zero zero eight, the Lenovo Improvement Association has reached out to the petitioner, and we understand that this request is to clean up their existing zoning. We have no issue with that, however, we do have concerns for the business roadside aspect as it could lead to an additional AS designation within the Lenovo boundaries. That would be another problem for the Lenovo community, as we are still dealing with the issues of the 2016 CZMP with the AS designation that that brought to our boundaries. In regards to six dash zero zero five, we know that this property is not in our boundaries. However, we are strongly encouraging the Planning Board in Baltimore County to think about the impact of the AS designation that has occurred within the Overly revitalization district. That is not a part of Overly, and the boundary should be reexamined. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Speakers, please, when you mention your issue, say you support it or oppose. That's very helpful. Thank you. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Stephen Nolan, speaking on issue six dash zero three three, followed by Mohammed Marzugani and Ted Amos.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Steve Nolan, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of our family, who owns the Courthouse Commons Limited Partnership, and this is part of issue six dash zero three three. This is the office complex that is just abuts the old jail. We're one block from the County Courts Building, and we are across Bosley Avenue from the Towson Police Station and Fire Station. This has been an office building that our family built in nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five. Our family's had property on Bosley Avenue since the sixties. What we're asking, what we asked Councilman Ortell to consider, and he did, so that there can be dialogue between our family and Southland Hills and West Towson, he created this placeholder issue. The office, the current office setup is not economically viable because of the glut of office space in the Towson core. But we met with Southland Hills, or I met with Southland Hills and West Towson before the map process started. I met again two weeks ago. We are committed to keeping the buildings the way they are. They have a very residential look to them. We're going to continue the dialogue with the community and either try to come up with a conversion to a residential homeownership type use or with an office use that may allow for medical offices. So thank you very much for your attention, and we'll continue to work with the community.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next, we have Mohammed Marzugani, on issue six dash ten, followed by Ted Amos and Beth Miller.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the zoning board. My name is Mohammed Marzugian. I'm here to speak in support of issue six dash zero ten and the zoning change of fifteen oh two East Joppa Road from office residential to business roadside. This property has not served residential purposes for many years. Instead, it's been predominantly used for commercial and business purposes, which stands as a testament to the evolving needs of our community, which no longer aligns with this current and restrictive zoning classification of office residential that limits business activity in a largely commercial corridor. With surrounding parcels all zoned as business roadside, business major, or business local, our request is not an outlier, but an appropriate and harmonious fit with the zoning pattern. A prime example is the parcel of fifteen oh one East Joppa Road, directly across from our property, which benefits from the business roadside zoning. This consistency in zoning will bring uniformity and ensure that our property too can be utilized in a manner that complements the area's current and future economic activities. Additionally, like fifteen oh one, our property is the last property on the fifteen hundred block of East Joppa, sitting at the intersection of East Joppa and the two-lane access road to the Merritt Athletic Gym and the large shopping centers directly behind our property, which are also zoned as business roadside and business major. Our commitment to this area is deep-rooted, and my family has nurtured this property for over three decades. My father has been a small business owner in the area for twenty-five years, and at seventy years old, he seeks to gracefully adapt his business to correspond with his current stage of life. The BR zoning provides him the flexibility necessary for him to do so. This zoning change provides our family with economic stability, whether through the continuation of family-owned business or by creating commercial leasing opportunities that meet market needs. In closing, we request this zoning change to business roadside to align our property's zone with its surrounding neighbors, foster economic stability and progress, and respond to current and future community needs. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next, we have Ted Amos on issue six dash zero zero one, followed by Beth Miller and Douglas Donovan.
For the record, my name is Ted Amos. I live on Georgia Court, adjacent to the CZMP issue six zero zero one property. I support reducing the zoning density at DR one. Current DR five point five zoning doesn't align with our neighborhood's original plan by the Roland Park Company predating the Baltimore County Zoning Act. The four hundred Georgia Court parcel was created as a single-family home, as a centerpiece for the community with green lawn view shed and distinctive rubblestone wall defining Southland Hills' historical character along three streets. The property's history, from Grafton Bosley Mansion to the Weishite family's residence, reflects a consistent vision for a single-family use of the parcel even after ownership changes, including transfer to the Baltimore Presbyterian. However, recent redevelopment attempts threaten this character. Just imagine if someone suggested dividing Sherwood Gardens into zero-lot line garage-front houses. That's essentially what the current zoning is suggesting. For a century, I don't think anyone in our neighborhood ever thought about splitting up and ruining this important piece of Southland Hills. Being the third generation of my family to live in the neighborhood, I can say that the four hundred Georgia Court property has always been cherished by the residents I have known, including those living at the Presbyterian home. The parcel should never have been zoned DR five point five in the first place. Current zoning overlooks infrastructure, can't support DR five point five subdivisions on the parcel. Our roads are too narrow. There are severe traffic and parking limitations. Water sewage, environmental systems outdated, let's see, outdated from the nineteen twenties. Previous attempts to develop the zoning proved unfeasible and safe and practical and ugly. PUD ideas failed also due to traffic, parking, regressing, stormwater management, and costly demolition requiring clean fill.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Beth Miller, on issue six dash zero one five, followed by Douglas Donovan and Carl Sandsbacher.
My name is Beth Miller. I am a board member of the Annesley Community Association. Our board is in communication with surrounding communities regarding issue six oh one five. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Green Towson Alliance. Councilman Ortell raised this issue in the sixth district to study the future use of the site, since the five point five acres containing a Catholic school building, play space, and parking are offered for sale. The surrounding residentially dense communities of Rogers Forge, Gaywood, Pinehurst, Bellona Gidding, Stonely, Annesley, Idlewild, Lakewood, Lake Walker, and Wilton Dale, among others, responded to polls on social media showing overwhelming support for Baltimore County to purchase this property. Seven hundred and forty-eight respondents want Baltimore County to purchase the land and add it to the existing seven acres of immediately adjacent recreation fields already owned by the county. Less than fifty respondents opposed the idea of using the land for a park, but thirty percent of those suggested other civic uses for the property, including reusing the existing school to alleviate overcrowding in county schools, or provide other services like healthcare and housing for the homeless, or creating multigenerational center for education, recreation, and art. The public sentiment reflects GIS mapping created by Neighbor Space that shows this area of Baltimore County having a deficit of open space relative to the density of the residents who live nearby. Most of our neighbors have insufficient access to open space within a five-minute walk of our homes. This is based on the standard of providing one thousand square feet of open space per dwelling unit. This acquisition would provide many physical, social, and mental health benefits to our communities. It would also contribute to solutions for many of our homeowners that are plagued by flooding. Conversion to pervious surfaces with green stormwater infrastructure that captures stormwater on-site, improves water quality, and reduces flooding. Native plantings provide habitat for wildlife and beauty for everyone. Therefore, we support an appropriate downzoning of the property to facilitate the acquisition by Baltimore County using program open space.
Thank you.
Other resources. Thank you.
Next up, we have Douglas Donovan, on issue six dash zero one five, followed by Carl Sandsenbacher and Jennifer McCollack. Douglas? Carl? Sandsenbacher? And Carl is speaking on issue six dash zero two zero.
Good evening. I am here to speak on issue six zero two zero regarding a property at ten ten Litchfield Road in the Idlewild neighborhood. The property is currently zoned R five, and I'm speaking, supported the issue to have it downzoned to R one. This is a property that contains a riparian buffer, one current residential property, a considerable amount of erosion, but most importantly, it abuts to the Herring Run watershed and to the local park system. Neighborhood and properties in the last cycle were also downzoned to the area R one. We'd like to continue that process with only the properties adjoining to this park area, not disturbing other residential areas in the neighborhood. We feel that is appropriate for Baltimore County to eventually have this continuous area of green space and to have this area as an area that we can continue to enjoy as sort of the lungs of the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Jennifer McCollack, on issues six dash zero one five and six dash zero two zero, followed by Ben Aelsworth and Dotsey Bregel.
Hello, I'm Jennifer McCollack. I am speaking on two issues tonight. You've heard about both already, so I'll keep my comments brief. Number one, I am against the issue on six zero one five, and I agree with Beth Miller that it should be zoned. I have some additional information, though. I was the principal person who helped design the Bio Retention Garden at St. Pius the Tenth. I have dropped in your receptacle outside a design that was created by the environmental consultant on the amount of stormwater that that Bio Retention Garden would cover. That Bio Retention Garden would only cover the amount of stormwater coming from the parking lot, and it would not treat anything else. What Beth said is correct. It would create additional problems for the neighborhoods and for the church in terms of stormwater runoff. So I'm going to leave my comment there, but I'm going to say I think in this case, green space would be better. Number two, in terms of six zero two zero, I support that with my husband Carl Sandsenbacher for the reasons he said. We have been property owners there since two thousand and five. I have dealt personally with some of the issues that have come up, and we feel that it would be better for the neighborhood and for the stormwater runoff in that area if it were downzoned to an R one, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ben Aelsworth, on issue six dash zero zero six, followed by Dotsey Bregel and Jeremy Tallman.
Good evening. My name is Ben Aelsworth, and I'm here to speak on issue six zero zero six and also zero zero eleven. I am a resident of West Towson and live at Allegheny and Highland Avenue, two blocks north of where three oh five Chesapeake is. And what you would find if you came to my house is you would see a vibrant neighborhood with sidewalks filled with children playing, dog walkers, and parents pushing strollers around the neighborhood. What you would also see is a lot of traffic, cars speeding, and cars blowing through stop signs. And that's just a fact of life in a neighborhood where you have buildings that should have never been placed there. And so what I'm asking the board to do is to reject the application to upzone Chesapeake, three oh five Chesapeake, to ensure that we have the opportunity to work with the county to first address the traffic problems. And this isn't hypothetical. My daughter, who I'm speaking on behalf of, and my entire family, last year during her birthday was in a crosswalk at a stop sign directly in front of her house, and a driver who wasn't paying attention had to slam on the brakes and skid to a stop so my kid wasn't hit. If we upzone this property, that's going to bring more delivery trucks, more traffic, and more people to the neighborhood, and we've had no community input with the developers in order to weigh in on how we would like our neighborhood to be. So for that reason, I ask you to reject this application. The second thing I'd like to talk to is issue zero zero eleven, which is basically taking a property next to a park where my daughter and my son also play and creating a parking lot. For a facility across the street that has plenty of parking, and why we need to bring more parking next to a playground is beyond me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dotsey Bregel, on issue six dash zero zero six, followed by Jeremy Tallman and Joe Garanzic.
My name is Dotsey Bregel. I reside at four oh one West Chesapeake Avenue. I'm here to speak about six zero zero six, and I live in the Southland Hills neighborhood. My husband and I have lived on the corner of West Chesapeake and Florida Avenue since nineteen eighty-two. Two homes separate us from the main entrance to the three oh five office building. During our forty-two years in our home, visitors, friends, and prospective neighbors have wondered aloud about the three oh five building being a misfit for our neighborhood. You have heard, you will hear, the history behind the development of this property, and we agree with our neighbors and neighborhood association that the building should never have been built in a residential section of Towson. We have many families with young children and dogs who are always out and about in the neighborhood. We already have a serious problem with the volume of cars, many traveling at speeds well in excess of the posted limit. Chesapeake Avenue is heavily overused as a cut-through to both Charles Street and Towson Town Boulevard. One can only imagine what some of the options for OR two zoning might bring. While walking the three oh five parking lot just Sunday, I was in disbelief as I counted seventeen homes whose backyards directly adjoin the property, all of which are single-family homes. This reemphasizes the fact that this building is an absolute outlier in our neighborhood, and it clearly belongs with similar construction on the east side of the Towson bypass. As of this moment, we are completely in the dark about the owner's development plans. We do know what the possibilities could be with OR two zoning, and whether it's a hotel, apartment complex, or any of the other available options, we feel strongly that it's a move in the wrong direction. Let's not allow a mistake made over fifty years ago to be made again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Tallman, on issue six dash zero zero six, followed by Joe Garanzic and Lisa Amma.
Good evening. I'm Jeremy Tallman. I'm here on behalf of the Southland Hills Improvement Association and the Vice President of the Association. I'm speaking about three oh five West Chesapeake Avenue, issue six dash zero zero six. As Dotsey mentioned, fifteen of the single-family homes in our neighborhood directly abut this two-acre property. Our single-family neighborhood was built in the nineteen twenties, four decades before the five-story ninety-two thousand square foot office building was constructed by way of a contested special exception. It should be noted that this eyesore of a building was approved while Spiro Agnew was serving on Baltimore County Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Agnew was later accused of taking kickbacks from contractors while serving as a Baltimore County Executive and the Governor of Maryland. The Southland Hills Neighborhood Association Board of Directors strongly opposes the request to upzone three oh five West Chesapeake. Most would agree that the existing office building defies common planning principles with its height, massing, and proximity to single-family residential homes. with its height, massing, and proximity to single-family residential homes. I'm going to skip ahead, and what I want to highlight is two articles from the Baltimore Sun. The first is from 2015. At the time, there was a wise president of the GTCCA named Mike Hurtell. Hurtell stated, "The GTCCA is bracing for a lot of expected requests from commercial property owners to dramatically upzone their investment properties by seeking increased, often higher-density use. Many of the property owners will put immense pressure on our councilperson to upzone their properties during the CEMP." The second article is from 2012. At that time, Councilman Hurtell was a volunteer with the West Towson Neighborhood Association. In the article, Hurtell states, "This is what drives me crazy. We have this core that's pretty mediocre. We could do a lot of development there, but we're always looking to go somewhere else." The article goes on to say that Hurtell opposes proposals that would expand the business area and allow taller office buildings.
Thank you, sir.
Cell towers and other structures on the west side of Bosley Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Joe Garanzic on issue 6-015, followed by Lisa Amma and William Smith. Joe? No? Lisa Amma on issue 6-015.
The next couple speakers?
After Lisa, we will have William Smith and Dave DeWitt.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
You need to speak closer to the mic.
Sorry.
That's okay.
So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking on issue 6015. I believe it's in support. It's in support of using the Baltimore County funds to make this a park. I was stirred to speak tonight, moved by how impacted I've been by this space. I'm a longtime resident of Rogers Forge, seven going on eight years, and about 15 years in Towson total. This green space has been my sanctuary. It's been my healing space, not just for me, but I know my neighbors as well. I just had to try to give it a chance to help make sure that we can secure it for the future for us to enjoy. This space was a key decision factor in my moving here. Not only do we have Lake Roland, Lock Raven, Cromwell Valley, the Tot Lot, but all the spaces in between. It is something I also love my community, and I try to be active. I teach yoga at Lake Roland in the senior center. There are just so many uses for this land other than more development for overcrowded area, especially when there's also a mental health crisis in green spaces, and the mental health crisis can go hand in hand and help each other out, especially during the pandemic when we were forced to go inside and couldn't go outside. I love my neighbors. Some of them are here, and I appreciate their support, but we all needed a little air. This space was my air. I took my therapy sessions in my car there, or if the weather was warm, out there. It was my place that I could breathe. Rogers Forge and the Tot Lot there has meant so much to me. Science and research support, even doctors now are prescribing green space and forest bathing for us. We have a mental health crisis, and we have green spaces. Hopefully, we can start to consider the ROI of what it means to really take advantage of those parks and recreation. I know it's meant so much to me and my life, especially with being a single woman, it's shrinking, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. William Smith on issues 6-006 and 6-012, followed by Dave DeWitt and Heather Benzani. And William is speaker number 16.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is William Smith. I am the president of the West Towson Neighborhood Association. I'll speak about six against both 6006, 305 Chesapeake, and I will also speak against 6012, the application 604 Central Avenue. 305 Chesapeake was built in 1965. The West Towson Neighborhood Association was formed in 1963. The original founders of the West Towson Neighborhood Association unfortunately could not be with us tonight, but I'm pretty sure it doesn't take much imagination to consider that 305 Chesapeake was likely a key reason why the West Towson Neighborhood Association was formed to begin with. You've heard it many times, and I'm going to repeat it. This building should have never been built. It does not fit architecturally with our area. It is a poor gateway to Southland Hills and West Towson, and it is also, it is outside of the strong residential character of both neighborhoods. We are committed to maintaining an owner-occupied residential character in both neighborhoods, Southland Hills and West Towson, and one reason, and we've heard some already from some of my colleagues tonight, but one reason is we do battle constantly student housing, and there's a strong likelihood that we're going to see with the proximity of Towson University, students moving into multifamily residences at this neighborhood. With respect to 604 Central Avenue, we've heard nothing about this project. There has never been an attempt to engage the West Towson Neighborhood Association about what this is. We don't know what is going on, and there are a lot of issues concerning green space and buffers and everything else. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Dave DeWitt on issue 6-006, followed by Heather Benzani and Melissa Davis.
I live at 307 West Chesapeake Avenue.
That's not you. They didn't reset the clock.
I'm not nervous anymore.
Time flies when you're having fun.
I got my time back. So on the west side of Bosley, the character and field, the neighborhood, are single-family homes, families, owner-occupied, and small business, limited small business. And I've worked on the east side of Bosley and on the west side of Bosley. Now I live on the west side of Bosley. So 305, my biggest concern is that it's going to be apartments, and it's going to be apartments for Towson University. I never did like the movie Animal House, and there's a good chance that that's going to be what it's going to be for me. So the quality of life and the values of properties will be impacted by that. Whatever 305 does, it should blend in with the neighborhood, which, again, is residential and very limited small business, and that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Heather Benzani on issue 6-006, followed by Melissa Davis and Michelle Yendall.
No.
Heather? No, Heather? Melissa? Melissa Davis?
Yes.
And Melissa is speaking on issues 6-005, issue 26, 30, and 34.
Hi, good evening. My name is Melissa Davis. I am the president of the Overly Community Association. We are in favor, I'm actually only going to talk about three today. We are in favor of a zoning change 6-034, which is the 6900 Bel Air Road location. It is currently as a BLCC. We request that this is changed to a CB zoning. This property has been a thorn in the side of our community for a very long time, and we would like this to become a community-supported business. My next issue is issue 6-030. We are in favor of changing this and removing the AS designation. It looks like the property in, the property is for 7403 to 7407 Bel Air Road. We would not like the AS designation removed for 7401, which was originally put in. That is a family business that has been in our neighborhood since 1845, and they do not want that, and we do not want that for them. My last issue is issue 6-005. This actually exists outside of the Overly community boundaries but is a request to change designation for AS designation for a nine-acre plot of land just down the road from us to become a sheets, and we are not interested in that. We fought very hard to have a lack of gas stations in our neighborhood, and we believe that this would be detrimental to the Bel Air Road corridor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker 20, Michelle Yendall on issue 6-024, followed by Nancy Goldring and Laura Maguire.
Good evening, and thank you to members of the planning board. This is in reference to issue 6-24, and I am president of the Harris Hill Condominium Association, which is located right next to it. The agreement with, what we agree with with the current proposal on 24 is the reduction in density to that property. It is a major concern to us. We've been there for 30 years, and for 30 years, this property has been undeveloped. It's also property that we have a concern about and would love to see it actually, frankly, open space. It has water issues. It has an underground stream that feeds the Herring Run. It floods on a regular basis. It causes flooding on East Pennsylvania Avenue, and there is only one egress and ingress into this property. There is also a turn signal on Joppa Road, so that's going to mean that no one can go west if they want to leave the resident. That means they're going to come through my neighborhood on our private road that we maintain. So we have some issues there that we are concerned about, and it would mean we have to change our way of life after all these years. We've been there for a very long time, and we are a good community member. We are concerned and would like to see that as open space. That goes beyond the issue tonight on 624, but it is what we would wish. And there is the traffic situation. Coming up the bypass to Joppa Road, most people use Providence as their own private entrance to 695. It's a very busy area, and we don't need the additional congestion. We are unable to cross Fairmount Avenue even at the light and even with a crossing mark, so there is a concern there for what's going to happen to the traffic. The drainage is an issue. We are concerned about that. There is the Elks Lodge down on East Pennsylvania Avenue that regularly floods with heavy rains on this property. We'd like to see something different, but we do want to lend our support to the changes to reduce. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Goldring on issue 6-024, followed by Laura Maguire and Karen Boecker.
Good evening to the planning board. I am Nancy Goldring, the president of the Northeast Towson Improvement Association, and my neighbor has announced most of our concerns, so I would like to announce my support for the downzoning for issue 0, I'm sorry, 6024, and say, in keeping with the article recently published in the Baltimore Sun, that it is a micro forest. It supports lots of wildlife, and at least three communities abutting it. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. We'd love to keep it the way it is. Thanks.
Thank you.
Laura Maguire on issue 6-015, followed by Karen Boecker and Russ Kuhn. Laura? Next up, we'll have Karen. And Karen is speaking on issue 6-017. After Karen, we'll have Russ, and then we will have Theo Lemire.
Hi, I am Karen Becker. I am the secretary for the Community Association of Oakley Manor, and we are in favor of the change from the DR 5.5 to DR 3.5 for our neighborhood. That covers some single-family homes, and we've had some individuals that have wanted to come in and take some of those single-family homes and change them into multiple family dwellings, and we want to preserve the character of those single-family homes within our neighborhood. So we thank you, and we are in favor of that. And the issue, I'm sorry, the issue is 6.017. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Russ Kuhn on issues 6-066 and 6-011. After Russ, we will have Theo Lemire and Megan Ailsworth.
All right, good evening. First of all, I just wanted to thank you all for putting all this time in. I just was looking at your schedule, and I see you've got a lot of these meetings come up, so I understand the two-minute limit. So first of all, you've heard a bunch of my neighbors talk about 6-006. It's clear this building should not be part of West Towson. It should never have been built where it is. It's really an abomination. You walk through the neighborhood, you're like, what does not fit? Oh, this does not fit. You know, the folks getting involved in this include Caves Valley. They've done a lot of work in Towson. They tried to do some work at the Presbyterian Home and quickly turned that into an office building against everything that Southland Hills and West Towson had wanted. Luckily, we got that stopped. They don't talk about what they want to do, but there's a lot of options here that are not good for our neighborhood, and they should not be on the side of Bosley that this building is in. We do not need higher density because this could be, you know, an office building. It could be an apartment building. God knows what they want to put in there. They haven't, they have not made that clear. So I want to say I strongly oppose the changes that are being requested on issue number 6-006. I also am here to talk about 6-011. I oppose the requested change. I don't fully understand what it is they're trying to do there. It is right next to a park that is constantly used by small children and a larger park that has two baseball diamonds. I walk through it practically every day. I'm curious, because it's used for SAT studying and things like that. I'm sure they're pretty busy. I have no idea what they're trying to do with it, but I oppose changing the designation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have speaker number 25, Theo Lemire, on issues 6-006 and 6-033. After Theo, we will have Megan Ailsworth and Jan Sherry.
Good evening. My name is Theo Lemire. I'm here to only discuss 6-006, and I strongly oppose that. I live on Old Bosley, which is technically Colonial Court, which sometimes is considered part of Southland Hills and sometimes is not. So this evening, you've heard from people in West Towson, Southland Hills, and now someone in Colonial Court, all opposed to the proposed changes. My opposition to that is based on four things. One, litter. Two, noise. Three, using Old Bosley, the street that I live on, as a pass-through. And I forgot my fourth one. But anyway, to talk about litter. The tenants, the people using 305 West Towson, throw litter over their fence into our areas, mine and my neighbor's on both sides. There is noise coming from there. And, oh yes, the lights. They've put up, the new owners have put up lights, and those at night are nuisance. The owners who have had that building now for a year have made no effort to do anything about the fence that surrounds their property and, you know, is causing a problem for some 17 other homes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Megan Ailsworth on issue 6-006, followed by Jan Sherry and Robert Ballmer.
Hello. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Megan Ailsworth, and I'm speaking in opposition to the zoning change request at 305 West Chesapeake, issue 6-006. And I really appreciate this opportunity. We brought our six or eight-year-old here tonight to show them that when they believe in something strongly in their neighborhood, that they have the option to do something about it. We live on the corner of Highland and Allegheny, just two blocks from this five-story office building, and we've lived in the area for three years and chose to live close to downtown Towson for the many amenities that that provides. But we appreciate the boundary, tentative boundary that is Bosley that kind of separates the neighborhood. We brought our six or eight-year-old here tonight to show them that when they believe in something strongly in their neighborhood, that they have the option to do something about it. We live on the corner of Highland and Allegheny, just two blocks from this five-story office building. And we've lived in the area for three years and chose to live close to downtown Towson for the many amenities that that provides. But we appreciate the boundary, tentative boundary, that is Bosley that kind of separates the residential area from the commercial downtown. As my husband mentioned earlier tonight, we deal with ongoing traffic issues with speeding and cars going through the stop sign on Allegheny. We've reached out multiple times trying to find solutions to this problem, and at this point now, we have not found a solution. If we sit outside in the spring on our front porch, we can count in 15 minutes the number of cars that speed through the intersection, and it's directly impacted both of my children. Our street is filled with families that live on Highland that have young elementary school-aged children, and we find ourselves as parents telling our children constantly to look before they cross the street going to the main playground in the neighborhood. And the last thing we need with a higher-density zoning is for there to be more traffic than cars in the area. So again, I'm speaking in opposition to the zoning request at 305 Chesapeake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Jan Sherry on issue 6-015, followed by Robert Ballmer and Glenn Gielharr.
Hi. Can you hear me okay? Good? Okay, 6015. I am located right adjacent to the St. Pius property. My yard backs up to their soccer field and the whole school area. And I've been there, it'll be 30 years this year. Before that, we lived three blocks away on Gaywood, so I've been Rogers Forge area for almost 40 years. I can speak to the usage of that land, of the fields there, of the school, and the potential for the school to be a community center is just amazing. It would be just wonderful. But the fields are always used by the neighbors nearby for games, Rogers Forge Field or Forge Park, but also the fields up there, you've got baseball, you've got soccer, you've got kids just running, you've got people with their dogs, people even at New Year's sending things up, you know, with their families. A lot of family-related stuff. I myself, I think when we bought our house there, we did it because I raised four kids there, and they've got neighbors, all of our neighbors have interacted and used that space. Our next-door neighbor's, unfortunately, he just had some back surgery, so he couldn't come, he and his wife. But I can, I would just really like that to be kept as a green space. It is vital. And I know that there's a community garden there too, also, which has brought in a lot of people from all over. It's not just my street, because I'm connected to it. It's the whole Forge area, it's Bologna Giddings, it's across the street, Annesley. A lot of people use it, and I think it's important that you know that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have speaker 30, Robert Ballmer, on issue 6-006. After that, we'll have Glenn Gielharr and Michael Ruby.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Robert Ballmer. I'm speaking to address issue 6-006, which I am against. That's the request to 305 West Chesapeake Avenue to upzone the current zoning of RO and DR 5.5 to RO-2. My wife and I have lived on Dixie Drive in Southland Hills for over 37 years. I was president of the Southland Hills Improvement Association from 1996 to 1998. My lengthy and active involvement in the community of Southland Hills over the years, I think, provides me a unique perspective on zoning issues. Over the years, the community has dealt with many developers and government institutions. We've witnessed well-intended promises and agreements over the years, only to see promises and agreements slip as leadership and economic situations and circumstances have changed. I am against the request to upzone this property at 305 West Chesapeake. The community of Southland Hills has been built out at DR 3.5 and DR 5.5. The building, as you've heard from other speakers, never should have existed, and it's too much to ask that the building be torn down at this point. But upzoning the property to OR-2 would basically compound the zoning mistake that was made over 50 years ago. The requested zoning upgrade to OR-2 would allow the present owners, who have only owned the property for two years, to change the current business use and nature of the property significantly, impacting our community and diminishing the recourse available to our community to ensure that our neighborhood remains a desirable and vibrant community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Glenn Gielharr on issues 6-018 and 6-013. After that, we'll have Michael Ruby and T. Brendan Kennedy.
Good evening. Thank you for your service and time. I'm Glenn Gielharr, Parkville resident, also a candidate for the Maryland House of Delegates. I'm here to speak first about issue 06013, Towson Place Shopping Center. My understanding is they're asking for a zoning change to add a residential component to that shopping center. I'm asking you to turn it down. And if you do decide to approve it, I'm asking that you look and see that there's some kind of assurances that it would be a senior community or perhaps ownership community. And the reason being is schools are terribly overcrowded. Pleasant Plains, you just go across the ballfields, you see trailer after trailer, they call them learning cottages. But, you know, a residential community at Towson Place would be just a terrible impact for schools. But more importantly, I want to speak in favor for 06018, property at 8913 Hartford Road. This property is asking for zoning change to be allowed to use, as they are permitted use, for fraternal organization. This is our American Legion, American Legion Parkville Post 183. My grandfather, a veteran of World War I, not II, I, was a member. They used to meet at the Emerald Tavern in the basement until they were able to get the resources to have a hall of their own. They bought a building, constructed a building across from Potty Hill Park, which more recently, with their numbers getting smaller with the Legion, they sold that property. And now, where they could have merged, but they didn't want that. The veterans didn't want the Parkville American Legion to go away. They wanted to have a home of their own. And now they've purchased this property, but they need you. They need your approval of this zoning change at 8913 Hartford Road so they can hold their meetings. And we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for veterans. Thank you again, and I appreciate your affirmative on this zoning issue.
Thank you.
Michael Ruby on issue 6-006, followed by T. Brendan Kennedy and Alexander McMullin.
County Executive Johnny Oshewski recently weaponized openness and transparency by adding an asterisk to a repugnant chapter of Baltimore County history. On October 6, Oshewski unveiled a plaque next to Spiro Agnew's official portrait, specifically mentioning the kickbacks scandals that led to his resignation from the vice presidency 50 years ago. In essence, Oshewski gave Agnew a swift kick to his posterity, so the shame he brought upon Baltimore County will never be forgotten. At the time of the unveiling, Oshewski, a former history teacher, said it is important to learn from this dark period of, quote, blatant cronyism and corruption rather than trying to hide from it, unquote. Now it is your turn to send the message that, in Oshewski's words, quote, "cheaters don't always prosper," that crime doesn't always pay, and that political might doesn't make right. The five-story office building that is the subject of issue 6006 is a product of Agnew's greed and has been recognized as an example of bad planning by every councilperson who has represented this area since. Don't earn your asterisk by recommending the requested rezoning for this illegal intrusion into a 100-year-old residential community. Sponsors of the zoning change say the office structure has outlived its usefulness, yet the new landlord has turned away prospective tenants and refused to allow existing tenants to relocate and expand within the building, akin to setting the place on fire and asking you to fix it. It is not your job to change the permitted uses so the landlord can make a profit, especially to the detriment of the surrounding residential community. It is your job to protect the livability of neighborhoods within walking distance of the Towson Core, and it is your job to send a clear message that cronyism is still not tolerated in Baltimore County. Otherwise, you too will deserve a swift kick in your asterisk.
Thank you.
Next up, we have T. Brendan Kennedy on issue 6-006, followed by Alexander McMullin and Teri Aston.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for your time and consideration. I'm not going to repeat what my friends and neighbors in West Towson already have said. I'll simply join them in opposition to 6006. Earlier this evening, the Ailsworth family spoke eloquently and harrowingly about witnessing their daughter almost hit by a car on her birthday in front of their house.
Sir, step closer to the mic, please.
I live right there, across the street from them, at Highland and Allegheny, 504 Highland. There's 15 kids under 14 years old that live within 25 yards of that intersection. Two of them are my daughters, and I can tell you the worst thing you'll ever hear is screeching tires and a kid's scream. Enough is enough. I'm against the proposed rezoning. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Alexander McMullin on issue 6-010, followed by Teri Aston and Timothy Holland Shade.
Good evening, one and all. I started out with, oh, I'm opposed to 010, the request to seeking BR zoning, which is the highest and best use that one could have. What you all don't understand, because you probably haven't seen the property, it's a little tiny postage stamp. I have no idea what could be built on that little tiny postage stamp. All the neighbors around that property, 1502 East Joppa Road, all the neighbors are professionals. We've got accountancies, we've got law firms, et cetera. And the BR would, BR zoning would allow them, allow the owner to do practically anything. It's the highest and best requirement. Totally unkeeping with the current revitalization zone that we're trying to put in there. We want to put more professional people in there, and instead, it would be this. I came up with something else to discuss, and then someone invoked the name of Spiro Agnew not once but twice. And all of a sudden, it hit me. 30 years from now, are we going to be seeing people complaining about what had happened in the year 2024 when zoning was requested to be upgraded to BR? Revitalization? Far from it. It could be anything. Anything could go in there. Bars, strip clubs, anything. And it's right there in the code, that strip clubs could be put in that spot, right between two law offices. As such, I would strongly request that this board reject the applicant's 6010. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Speaker number 35, Teri Aston, on issue 6-025, followed by Timothy Holland Shade and Chris Teri? No? Next up, we have Timothy Holland Shade, speaking on issue 6-010. After that, we will have Chris Mudd, followed by Whitney Ramirez.
On the, I work at 1501 East Joppa Road, and I am against the 6010, because I've seen what's happened to the north side of Joppa Road over the last 40 years. Changing this zone gives you a wide variety of things that could happen. There is still one resident that lives about two houses down, and what he tells me goes on at 1502 Joppa Road in the evenings, because it's, right now, it's rented to a wellness center, which it's been several other businesses over the last 15 years. And I've watched them blacktop all the parking lots in their houses across the street, and I'm just against it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Chris Mudd on issue 6-006, followed by Whitney Ramirez and Patrick O'Keefe.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Chris Mudd with Venable LLP, and I'm pretty sure I'm about to be a pretty unpopular person. I'm here to speak in support of 6-006. And I think what I should say after this evening is I'm in support of encouraging my client to do a lot more outreach than they've done to date. There's been some outreach. It may seem like there was none tonight, but there has been some outreach before the application was filed, and that was with at least some folks in the West Towson neighborhood. There clearly needs to be more outreach with people in Southern Hills as well as West Towson, and I'd encourage anybody, I have this bright vest on, if you want to give me your contact information, I'm happy to pass it on to my client. I should mention, I'm an attorney. I'm not directly involved, other than representing my client in this. I do want to mention that sometimes redevelopment can actually be an opportunity to cure the ills of the past, so I would encourage people to have, and the Planning Board as well, to have an open mind. I don't think I can sit here tonight and ask the Planning Board to vote in support of this request. It's just not appropriate at this point, given the fact that there are so many people in the community that are opposed to it. But my client fully understands that they need to go through this community in order to have any progress here. And so I'm here to tell you tonight that they're committed to do that, and I'm hopeful that folks in the community will be willing to listen to them as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Whitney Ramirez on issue 6-034, followed by Patrick O'Keefe and Nicholas Lenahan.
Good evening. My name is Whitney Ramirez, and speaking on 6034, in favor of change in the designation from CCC to CB, because it says services needed for the nearby residents. Currently, that plot used to be a nightclub. Most of us in the neighborhood don't attend that nightclub, and on top of that, most of us are faced with the aftermath of having to clean up the area once the party is over. I also run a financial literacy business out of the location, because it's commercial and residential. And with kids coming to the property, that's something we want to make sure we kind of safeguard the area, in which they don't necessarily have to see day parties, loud music, or people coming in and out of the club area. So in favor of CB. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number 40, Patrick O'Keefe, on issue 6-009, followed by Nicholas Lenahan and Michaela Jensen.
I'm Patrick O'Keefe. I'm here on behalf of issue number 6-009. It involves a minor change to zoning lined within 100 feet of the intersection of Taylor Avenue and Oakley Road, the address being 7901 Oakley Road. I will leave a copy of all prior correspondence and maps here for your perusal in the future. I do not live at the property. My brother-in-law does with my cat. I offered to help my brother-in-law change his zoning slightly to allow a better business local zoning line to allow parking to be off-street rather than on either Oakley Road or Taylor Avenue. There are currently two auto repair shops at that location, and the parking is horrendous. Now, I traveled Taylor Avenue in the 1960s to get to Towson to work for Spiro Agnew at that time, since his name. But in fact, I was hired when Chris Cole and Michael Birmingham were in charge. However, this change involves my brother-in-law, who will speak when I get finished, and he'll state how long he's been on the property and why he is requesting this zoning. It's for the betterment of the intersection, and things change, hopefully for the better. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next up, we have Nicholas Lenahan on issues 6-004, 7, 12, and 10.
Good evening, and thanks for your time. My name's Nicholas Lenahan. I'm a board member of the Associates of Lockraven Village, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Associates of Lockraven Village. We opposed, firmly we oppose, the request 6004, which is 1703 East Joppa Road, and 6007, 1630 East Joppa Road, and 60- 6007, 1630 East Joppa Road, and 6010, 1502 East Joppa Road. The first two, 6004 and 6007, are both at the intersection of Lockraven Boulevard and Joppa Road. 6010 is also in the Lockraven Commercial Revitalization District, and is also important to us. And I will speak to each of these individually. 6004 is requesting an AS zone overlay, and so is 6007. We do not need any more automotive service uses in our district, in our revitalization district. We have been making great strides to improve the quality of and diversity of land uses in our commercial district. A great example of that is the recent case of the Valvoline, which was denied by the Board of Appeals, which was going to be a Valvoline, which is automotive use. And that was denied because of the safety issues and traffic issues of the failing F-intersection at Lockraven Boulevard and Joppa Road.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Michaela Jensen on issue 6-015, followed by Greg Cruz and Vicki Fane.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you, board, for your time this evening. My name is Michaela Jensen. I live on Schwartz Avenue, which directly backs up to the property that is currently owned by St. Pius and the Archdiocese of Baltimore. I am speaking in, I guess, favor that the county consider purchasing that land for green space, additional green space and park space. And I know we've heard a lot this evening from some of my community members, that space is currently used by hundreds of people every day. On any given day, there are dozens of families, community members, and, you know, young youth athletes that are using that property. I would love to see the county consider it for some sort of youth sports complex or community center. There's a great demand in our community for that, and I don't think that we, us Towson, offer anything to our community that way. I would also like to ask you to take into consideration the traffic on York Road and how if we continue to build residential or consider that for multifamily, how that would impact the residents as well as the parking in the Rogers Forge community. It's a struggle as it is, and continues to grow to be a struggle. And I think that's it. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next, we have Greg Cruz on issue 6-009, followed by Vicki Fane and Bernard Fane.
My name's Greg Cruz. I'm here in support of 6009. I'm the owner of the property, 7901 Oakley Road. It's a single-family home built in 1953 by my grandparents. It's directly behind the Prestige Tune-Up, Rothel Body Shop, and the Maria's complex of the bar, liquor store, and carryout. I've lived there my entire life. I've seen many, many changes over the years. And I hear many, many rumors of the future with widening Taylor Avenue. Every couple of years, they talk about things, and nothing seems to have happened yet, but it's inevitable it's going to happen, I think. What directly concerns me is my property line, the garage on my property is already business local, goes through portion, a portion of that. I would like to have that to include the garage. I'm retired, work part-time, I like doing bicycle restoration, some motorcycle restoration, and I eBay collectibles out of my house. So it's for RO for the house, have a little office in there to do that, and if I wanted to use my garage for that. And just for future development, whatever's going to happen to that area, I plan on staying there the rest of my life. There's no one else but me. I'm divorced, and it's just me and my pets. But I just thought that would be a good move to do this, and it would be good for the community and the area if any of those businesses, they already have parking issues along Taylor Avenue. And if they ever went to widen Taylor Avenue, they would have to move back. I don't know if they could, I don't know what that would involve. But I just thought this might be an opportunity to look into it, make some changes. My dad had talked about it back in the 80s, and he passed away in 86, and nothing ever happened. And here I am, the last in line with the home, and I just thought it would be a good choice, and I'd like to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Vicki Fane on issue 6-028, followed by Bernard Fane and Jeff Shaney. Bernard Fane? Next up, we will have Jeff Shaney, followed by...
Sir, are you Bernard?
Jeff Shaney.
Jeff Shaney.
After Jeff, we will have Ben Babluch, and Jeff is speaking on issue 6-011.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This involves 604 Central Avenue, and I oppose the zoning change. I think the overall message from most of the speakers tonight is to keep the density in downtown Towson. That means keep it away from the west side of Bosley Avenue. And this property is located on the west side. It's across the street from Bicota. If you look at an aerial, it's one large block that is all Baltimore County recreation space with one small cutout for this particular residence in question. The issues that make me oppose this are traffic, trees, and runoff. Traffic on Allegheny Avenue, you've heard from many residents, is dangerous, but the alley behind Allegheny Avenue is even more dangerous. My house fronts Allegheny, the back of the house is the alley and faces the property in question here. The traffic from Baltimore County, the Bicota Center and the office building, they use the alleyway as their main way to these properties. And any change in the zoning for this property, especially as a parking lot, is going to increase that traffic. There are decades or century-old trees on the property, so this speaks to additional health for the neighbors and also for downtown Towson. The other issue is runoff. None of the Baltimore County parking lots in this area, the Bicota, the office building, none of the private offices in the neighborhood have stormwater management. All the water from these parking lots, the Baltimore County parking lots runs onto the streets, and it does make its way into my yard. I oppose the zoning and ask that you enforce the stormwater management requirements...
Thank you, sir.
...for the Baltimore County properties.
Thank you.
Our final speaker of the evening is Ben Babluch on issues 6-006 and 6-011.
I'm Ben Babluch, West Towson resident, speaking on issue 6-006. I'm against it, as numerous other people have spoken tonight. The building should never have been built, obviously it's there, but upzoning it just further exacerbates that issue, so I'm against it. And I think it speaks volumes that of all the people who came and spoke tonight, the only person who spoke for it was the person paid to be here tonight. No offense, Mr. Mudd, I'm sure he's a good person. I'm also here to speak against the issue 6-011, as stated, it's next to a park. Changing the zoning doesn't seem a good idea for that spot. If the rumored intent for that property is for the county to buy it and do parking something else, then, you know, let the county buy it first for the protection of what could further happen if we change the zoning, as well as if the zoning is changed and now increases the value of the property, which seems against the best interest of the taxpayers' money if we raise the value of the property, the county then turns around and buys. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And again, we want to thank all of you for your attendance and your cooperation and respect. We will take your comments and your written testimony into consideration. Have a great evening and safe travels home.